Okay, so counsel, let's get started. If that's okay with everybody. Good evening. Looks like to me we got a sort of a full house with everybody. Appreciate everybody joining us tonight. So let's start off with a moment of silence. Good evening. Let's stand and let's join Mr. Lester for opening prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Will you join me in prayer? Almighty God bless your public servants in this county that we do our work in wisdom, humility, and compassion for the people of this place. Protect us and our neighbors from dangers, sickness, and pandemic. Grant us your grace to work your stability. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. So let's follow this with the Pledge of Allegations of the Flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'm here, Charlie.
Okay, great, Corey. Appreciate it. Okay, so we just did the Oakham prayer, Corey, and the Pledge of Allegations to the flag. Okay, so the next thing on the agenda tonight. Counsel has an agenda for December 15 before us. Is there any additions or corrections tonight for the agenda for the evening?
Counsel President Callahan, I have an addition and a deletion for the agenda. The addition will be adding, I would like to add Cassandra, our Department of Tourism and Economic Development, between dispersments and the presentation of certificates of recognition. The County Office of Tourism has been approached by an anonymous donor who would like to donate some funds to the Talbot County Economic Development and Tourism Emergency Fund, and she'll give us more information about that. So I'd like to have that added and then remove under the Council Manager's Report the letter G, proposed relocation of recycling facility of Cordova for Cordova. We want to review the site options that we have for that and have a little bit more time before making a decision. So I ask that we make those two changes to the agenda, please.
I'll second those changes.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to add and delete a couple items for the agenda night. Madam Secretary?
You're muted, please.
I'm sorry. Madam Secretary, can I have a vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Did you hear us, Corey? All right. Okay. Thank you, counsel. Okay, we're moving on to minutes. Counsel has had a chance to review the minutes from October 27th and November 10th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing the chair moves that the minutes be accepted with unanimous consent. Okay, the next line item, dispersments. Dispersments on December 15th. Counsel has had a chance to review the dispersments on December 15th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? Hearing the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted with unanimous consent. Okay. All right. Now we're going to move on to Agenda Five. A presentation and a certificate of recognition of the Talbot County Board of Elections. Okay. I would like to introduce Joe Seacrest. Is Joe on here?
Mr. Counsel President?
Yes, sir.
I thought that Mr. DeVillio's amendment was to put Mrs. Van Hooser's presentation between--
Oh, in that one there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that his motion? Okay.
Was it in that light? That's my fault.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay, all right, no problem. So, okay. Cassandra, could you hear us? Cassandra?
It looks like she's calling in, so it may take her just a second to get the star three and get through on the phones.
Okay, all right. Thank you. There she is. She's calling in, it looks like. Can you hear us, Cassandra? Can you turn the volume up? I can see you talking.
You hear me on the phone?
There you go. There you go.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so we have a really bright spot in our holidays. As you know, we've had many grant applications for our Talbot Cares Small Business Grant and for the Restaurant Relief Program. Because of the publicity that we've gotten for that, I had a small family foundation contact me and asked me if they could make a donation to the Midshore Community Foundation for us to use in support of small businesses. I thought that that was a fantastic idea because we are running out of Cares funds. We're required to use those by the end of the year. We approved 81 restaurant applications and mailed those today. Those went out the door today after our grant agreements were signed. But as we head into the new year with lots of need on the horizon, we don't really have an emergency fund that we can use. And so this is a small amount of money, around $40,000, $40,000 to $45,000. But, and it is being made anonymously. The Midshore Community Foundation has agreed to be our partner in this. And I am working with our Grants Committee that has put together the guidelines for both of the programs that I mentioned, the Cares Program for Small Businesses and the Restaurant Program, to set forth the guidelines for this. And truly, we're looking at emergency situations, serious, unexpected, unavoidable business hazards that affect businesses that might cause them to close their doors. And again, our goal here is to keep as many businesses as possible operating and moving forward in Talbot County as we move through the COVID pandemic. So I think this is an extraordinarily generous offer. We are willing and ready to use these funds to help the business community with your approval. So tonight, I believe we are voting on whether to do this or not and whether to enter into an agreement with the Midshore Community Foundation to make this happen. I'll take questions.
Okay, thank you, Cassandra. That's great. So we're, Madam Secretary, we've got a motion to accept what Cassandra has laid out for the grant and stuff. Is there any questions?
Aye.
I don't have any questions. Mr. President, I would just have just a quick brief statement that first of all--
Sure.
Whoever this donor is, certainly appreciate their generosity. We do know that, as Cassandra said, the Cares funding will come to an end very shortly, in a matter of a couple of weeks. December 30th, any unspent money here in the county must go back to the state. To date, we have distributed some nearly $200 million back into our local businesses here in Talbot County. That's not a small undertaking for a county our size. I just want to thank Cassandra and her team for doing all the legwork, vetting through those applications, working with the finance office, making sure that we're crossing all the Ts and dying all the Is. The reason why I like this particular money, it's not a lot of money, but it doesn't have the additional strings attached to it that the Cares funding did. And we can use that money as a springboard going into 2021, into the winter season. So I support the motion, I'll second the motion if it hasn't been seconded already. But just want to say thank you for the donor, wherever he or she may be, or the group may be, and thank them for thinking about the business community here in Talbot County.
So Mr. Callahan, the original motion. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lester.
So I will second Mr. Peck's motion and agree with everything that he has to say. What an extraordinary act of generosity and thanks to the donor who's putting this forward.
I would agree with both those comments too. It just shows you what kind of phenomenal community we live in. And when push comes to shove, people really plan out. And we really, really appreciate that, that's for sure. So, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Before you do that, I'd like to just say a couple remarks if I could, Mr. President. Mr. DeVillio, a couple of weeks ago, when we were talking about the Kate's Point and either getting up the road, there was a lot of talk about people complaining about that wealthy landowner and how that wealthy individual was taking land away and how wealthy people in Talbot County can do that. This is obviously not somebody who's lost their income and just struggling to get by. You don't have to look very far in Talbot County to see all the wealth that reaches out and helps all the different nonprofit organizations that are based off of those donations. And I would like to thank that anonymous donor for doing that. There's a lot of those in Talbot County that step up to the plate when people are in need, and I want to thank them and support them. We're very fortunate, the area that we live in, there's a lot of need. And we're fortunate to have those who step up and contribute to charities and organizations like the Midshore Community Foundation that can help facilitate them. So thank you very much, Cassandra, the Midshore Community Foundation, and to all the donors in Talbot County that are stepping up at this time.
Thank you, Mr. DeVillio. Mrs. Price?
I'll just agree with everything that's been said, and Mr. DeVillio, I really appreciate your point. Very, very well stated. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary, ready to call for the vote now?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Motion has been seconded and it's passed. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Cassandra.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. Now, now on the agenda here, we'll move to the presentation and certificate of recognition of the Talbot County Board of Elections. Is Mr. Seacrest here?
Yes.
There he is. How you doing, Joe?
Doing well.
That's great. That's great. You want to make your little presentation, please?
If I correct you a little bit, we don't want, the board doesn't want the recognition. We want to express and have you express the recognition to all, to our director and all of our staff people, the temporary people that were brought in from the state aboard, the contractors, the election judges, and also some of the election judges served as canvassers, which actually tallied the mail-in votes, which we had something close to 9,000 mail-in votes. So they came in for several different days and spent six or eight hours canvassing the mail-in votes. And all the election judges, we had a fair number of new ones this time, thank goodness, because some of our judges, like all of us, are getting a little bit older, so they didn't serve during the pandemic. So we had a lot of new ones, and they served long days, and we had to do extra duty to wipe down and keep distancing and that sort of thing. So we want to commend particularly all the election judges that served this time. We have well over 100, and whatever you issue as proclamation, we'll distribute to all them, sit down, and get it. So we just want to ask you to give thanks--
Thank you. I'm going to pass it to counsel for comment.
This is Councilman DeVillio. So I voted in person this year, and as I have always done. And I'd like to thank all of those who were participating and helping keep it safe, clean. We had, yeah, so you worked a lot of hours so that a lot of people could go at different times, which spaced things out, which I think was great. I felt very safe. I was never within 12 feet of another person in the firehouse when I voted. So I'd like to thank you guys for all your work to make sure that we can continue the process that we always have done, but do it in a safe way. So thank you.
It was also really kind of cool. People had a lot of good personalities because I think this happened a lot when there was a new voter. Boy, did that guy practically get out his megaphone and give a big congratulations, and everybody would give a whoop-whoop, you know, when there was a new voter coming in, they made that announcement. So that was exciting. I too went in person. So I guess the only way you're going to get the whoop-whoop is if you go in person. But it was run very, very well, better than I can ever remember. I mean, there were people there, but it was very well done. But it was also kind of exciting to see some of the new voters along with all of the new people that, you know, that helped us out and counted ballots and were poll watchers and all of that. So we do appreciate everybody kind of putting themselves at a little bit of risk, you know, to work those long hours and be there. So thank you to everybody, and thank you, Joe, for bringing this recognition forward so that we can let everybody know how thankful we are.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
I want to share my thoughts on this. First of all, I want to thank Joe, you and your board members for having the foresight to recognize your poll workers and your judges. They oftentimes don't get the recognition that they deserve. This was a historic election, and we all know some 150 million people across the country came out and exercised their constitutional right to vote. Here in Talbot County, the numbers were up as well. I did not vote in person this year. I did use the mailbox outside of your Election Board Office on Bay Street. Founded very convenient. My wife and I both used it. So the fact that the State Board of Elections and the Local Board of Elections had the passion and the understanding to allow people to vote a variety of different ways, either in person, by mail-in ballot, or to come and drop it off at the mailbox out front, allow for people who were somewhat cautious about the virus to use that option. So I certainly join you and your board members in recognizing them and thanking them for a job well done.
And Mr. President, I'll add my compliments to all involved in Talbot County and the administration of the election. Thank you for an extraordinary effort. You encouraged voting by mail. You managed to tally many of those ballots before Election Day. Early voting went smoothly. Day of election went smoothly, and results were released promptly. And, you know, we had all taken this, as I said earlier in a previous meeting, we'd all taken this kind of thing for granted in previous years. And this year, I think we have a really renewed appreciation for the extraordinary work that goes into this in any normal year, and this was no normal year. Thank you sincerely.
Thank you, Mr. Lester. Counsel, I couldn't agree with you more. Joe, your whole team, you know, literally hundreds of people helped you make this very successful for us in Talbot County and all the hard work. And we really appreciate all the volunteers, all the safety procedures that you put in. And I commend you. So thanks a lot. Really appreciate it. So, Madam Secretary, could you please put in the record and read the recognition, please?
Certificate of Recognition to the Director, Staff, Election Judges, Canvassers, in recognition of your commitment, support, knowledge, and expertise to the election process during the 2020 primary and general election in order to ensure a fair, uninterrupted voter experience and successful election in Talbot County in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. We hereby bestow upon you as a token of the esteem and gratitude of our community this certificate of recognition on this 15th day of December 2020, signed by the council members.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion and a second to approve the certificate of recognition?
So moved.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVillio?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Joe, for everything. I think we have our certificate for you, so you can present that to your team for everything. So, once again, thanks a lot, Joe.
Well, we thank you for your assistance in this. And the election judges were really put it kind of on the spot because they have to work for 15 hours. That's a long time to wear a mask. So they needed a break to take off their mask as much as anything else. So we thank you for helping to recognize them.
Okay, thanks a lot. Stay safe and appreciate you coming. Okay, counsel, now we're going to move on to a presentation by the Talbot Faith Shelter. Ms. Julie Lowe, Executive Director, and Jamie Bigler, Marketing Development Director. What we want to welcome you guys. And I guess, is Julie on here?
Yeah, she sends her apologies. She couldn't join us tonight, so she asked me to represent on her behalf.
That's great. That's great. So you want to give us a little bit of update of the programs and give us--
Yeah, that'd be great. So last time I called in last month to give you all an update, we were getting ready to go before the Easton Board of Zoning Appeals to request our special exception permit to operate at 109 Goldsboro Street, which is the building directly next door to our current shelter facility. We went on November 17th, and it was approved by unanimous decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals. So we have an expected settlement date for the purchase of the property of January 15th, at which point we have a couple of, the house is in really great shape, but there are a couple of things that we want to do before we feel it's ready for guests. So we'll be putting in a fire suppression system. There's a little bit of remediation that needs to happen with just a few spots of molden, a couple of little asbestos spots that they found in the house. That's already underway before we even purchased the property, which is really nice. There's some HVAC work that needs to be done. It doesn't affect the heat, so we don't necessarily need to do that right away before we can welcome guests into the house. We're hoping that our contractors will be available right after settlement and that we'll be able to be up and running and welcome our first guests in at the end of February, beginning of March at the latest. So pray that our contractors are available. It's really, really exciting. I have to tell you, the response this time around has been overwhelming, and we are just incredibly honored that the community, it understands what it is that we're trying to do and has stepped up in such a huge way to support it. I can't tell you how many people are just so thrilled that we're expanding, but also that we're expanding directly next door. People are just really excited about it. So I don't know how many of you know about our actual program. If you don't mind, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and do a quick summary of what it is we actually do at Talbot Interfaith Shelter. Is that okay with you all?
Yep, just quick. We're just running a hair behind, but that'd be great.
So we've developed a program. It's called S4 Shelter Stability Support Success. This is a program that walks people step by step from homelessness to self-sufficiency. So they come into our shelter facility, and pretty soon there will be a families-only facility and a single individual facility. There, they get case management. They work with our case manager to figure out, you know, what do you have and what do you need? And they develop a personalized plan, and then they are, you know, helped guided step by step through that plan on their way to self-sufficiency. We have educational programming, some of which is a little bit on hold right now due to COVID. But the most important program is our Getting Ahead and Adjust Getting By World Class, which is an incredible program. This is where guests learn about poverty, they learn about the root causes of poverty, how to maximize your resources, and the hidden rules of society that can help you really pull yourself up out of poverty. And once you are more self-sufficient, how to wean yourself off of those services so that you become more independent. It's an incredible program. We just graduated our, I believe it's our fourth or fifth class last week of the Getting Ahead program, so that's really great. We have nutritional cooking, we have health classes, parenting classes, anything that our Director of Operations sees is a need and a trend with our guests. We try to get some sort of programming in there to help our guests to fill that need so that when they do go back out into the community, they have all the tools in their toolbox that they need to, you know, stay independent. So once they reach a certain level of financial security, we have 10, right now, 10 off-site transitional apartments that are scattered throughout town. Once a guest meets the criteria, they'll be invited to move into one of our transitional apartments that come fully furnished. It's all donated by the community. Quite incredible. We have storage units full of furniture waiting to move into apartments, to move into the new house. It's really amazing. And when they start off, they pay about $250 to $300 a month in rent, and we subsidize the remainder. Over the course of about two years, their portion increases incrementally until they're able to take over the full amount of rent, at which point we still stick with them for at least six months to make sure that's something that's sustainable. So the last thing we want to do is say, okay, you paid the full rent once. Now go find somewhere in the community that's more expensive to go live. So once we feel that's sustainable and they've got the habits in place, then they get a nice note encouraging them, you know, congratulations, you've done great. We now encourage you to take the next few months to go out into the community and find your new home. And even when guests leave, we are their support system. They know that they can come to us for anything, anytime, and we'll be there for them. And, you know, our program, you know, I just want to echo some of the sentiments about the community. Our program would not be possible without the support of the community. Hundreds of volunteers, hundreds of donors, people dropping off paper towels and toilet paper and detergent and, you know, clothes for our kids and whatever we need whenever we ask. This community is unbelievable, and we are truly blessed that this is where we are headquartered. So that's where we're at. I'd love to answer any questions you all might have.
Okay, I appreciate it, Jamie. That's a great, that's great. So, Counsel, Frank?
Look, Jamie, I follow you on Facebook because, I mean, you do an excellent job out there getting the word out and fundraising and what needs there are. But I'm drawing a blank. Is, there is something going on right now that you are raising some money for and I'm not sure how much and what you're doing?
Yes, that's a great question. I'm always happy to talk about that as the Development Director. So when we, I should probably have mentioned that, you know, with our expansion comes a really significant expansion in our operating budget. And so our operating budget, projected budget for this year before the expansion was almost $500,000. We are now projecting for the foreseeable future, a budget of anywhere between $750,000 to $800,000. That does include a lot of new hiring, moving, moving some of our part-time staff to full-time, hiring a brand-new case manager. We've just hired a marketing and development associate as well to help with fundraising. So we're very excited to also be adding jobs and, and increasing hours during this crazy time. Right now, we have, we have a couple that's been longtime supporters of the shelter who were really excited about the expansion and they wanted to kickstart our fundraising effort. So they offered to match the next $100,000 that we raised. It was around the end of October when they talked to us about it. Mid, mid-November is when we launched this and we gave ourselves a, a, an end date of January 31st. Last week, we hit $100,000 already in about three and a half weeks. Our matching donors came back and were so excited that they extended our match to $125,000. We are, as of today, at $114,500 in four, four weeks. And I know of some money out there that's actually going to take us to that match. So I'm kind of scrambling because I would love to keep the momentum going. We've got a lot more money to raise to reach our goal by the end of this fiscal year and, but we're so enthused. I looked at our donor, donor roll today for the fundraiser. We've had more than 350 individual donations since we made this announcement in just a month. So it's incredible, incredible, incredible what this community is coming together to do. It's touching. I, I feel like I have the best vantage point in, in the world for how generous the community is.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else, Counsel?
Mr. Callahan, just, you know, the, the remarkable speed of the community response to this is, is evidence not only of the strength of the community, but of, but of, but of Jamie's hard work here. And she could not do this hard work if she did not have a, a product that really resonated. This, this is a model program and it is, it is little wonder that the community has responded to an organization whose reputation has, is just sterling. And the, the service that you provide to this community is, is truly extraordinary. Thank you for all you do and, and congratulations on, on hitting this milestone. I have, I have a soft spot for, for this. I, I think I may have mentioned last time. I lived for some time in 109 Goldsboro and so I know that house very well. And, and I, I hope that it, I hope that it serves you, serves you well. I knew where all the roof leaks and plumbing troubles and so forth were back a quarter century ago. Hopefully those, those have mostly been, been solved.
We hope so too. So just to respond to your comment about it being a model program, I should let you know that we've been contacted by several other communities in our local area as well as, I believe, even as far as the rural community in Virginia that are really interested in our program. And we feel that, you know, once we get the expansion under our feet, this is something we really want to do is we feel like this is a program that can be not necessarily duplicated, but used as a blueprint for other communities to, you know, make it what it needs to be for their community. And we're very, very excited to work with other communities and consult with them and help them do the same thing. So that's, you know, we're very, very excited about that.
Counsel, any other comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief, Mr. Callahan. Jamie, how are you? Good to see you again. I was there visiting with Jamie and Julie about a month ago and sitting in the backyard and having a wonderful visit with them. Look, I remember back when TIS was rotating between churches. And my church, Union Baptist Church in Easton, also participated in housing people overnight for the weekend. We were bringing cots and feeding them through the weekend and you went from church to church doing that and that's how TIS got started. Just going to different churches and putting people up for a few nights at a time. I, I am remarkably surprised at how well you've been received within the community now. Because you and I both know that wasn't the case several years ago when the mandates came out. But anyway, times have changed. You've, you've shown yourself that you are a purpose-driven organization. I guess this is basically a double-edged sword here. On one side of it, we are very pleased that we have an organization like TIS working. At the same time, we have to recognize that homelessness is still an issue in Talbot County. And I always remark to people when they say how wealthy Talbot County is and that Talbot County is, was just the Hamptons of the Chesapeake. We still have a fair amount of poverty here in the county. We still have a fair amount of homelessness in the county. TIS, along with, I know we have on our agenda this evening, we're going to hear from Neighbor Service Center and what they're doing to address homelessness here in the county. So I certainly support these organizations and what they do. Again, it's a double-edged sword. We applaud you for your efforts, but at the same time, we have to also recognize that we still have an issue here in the county when it comes to homelessness. Congratulations to you and your team.
Thank you.
Mrs. Price?
I will echo all of my colleagues' comments and thank you very much, Jamie. I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. So Jamie, obviously you got a lot of fans out here, that's for sure. Man, you and your team, Julie, you know, I, I think, I think it helps, it really helps. I, I went in and seen the program myself and put my own eyes on it and it really, really touches your heart and change your perspective on a lot of things to try to help people. Thank you. I'm supporting you and you guys are doing a phenomenal job. So I really appreciate it. Thanks a lot, Jamie.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for the time. We really appreciate it.
Have a great Christmas too, okay?
Thank you, you as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Counsel, now we've got, we've got a presentation of the Talbot Watermen's Association. And we've got Jeff Harris as President and we, we have Captain Rob Newberry as Chairman of the Delmarva Fishery Association giving us an update. So these guys are, give us an update on everything. So you guys available? There, there's the captain.
Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah.
I'm having trouble with my camera. It came on in the beginning, but I'm in trouble. I'm gonna try this. Do you see this? Okay, they can't see it. Turn off.
Can you see it?
Yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Say it. We can say it.
All right, well, we want to, first, we want to thank you for this opportunity. To be able to come here today to show you kind of an update of the past year. Of course, we know the year was strange and it was definitely strange for the waterman. Awesome surprises in there, but eventually it turned out to what we thought it would be, lower prices and things like that. Next screen. So update, there are 520 individual license holders in Talbot County. The breakdown. Can you go back? Okay, well, the breakdown is, it's probably about 40 clambers. That might be as much as 30% of the clambers in the state. This past season, almost all the clambers in the state worked in Talbot County waters. That was basically due to the past year where there was a lot of rain and it seemed to be the only area where there was any clams. There's also this year, we had 252 surcharges paid. That money is used in our shell program. It's kind of interesting. There's also 252 unlimited TFL licenses, which means licensed you can do everything. And we think that came from last year when there was a bill in that if you hadn't had your surcharge for a while, that they were going to take it away from you. So we think a lot of people just pay that. But now this next screen, I'm going to kind of go over a review of everything that happened January through March. The oyster season, the harvest levels were actually above what they had been the previous year, but we were still only working two to three days a week because of market demand. And that was pre-COVID. This was before COVID hit. So we had problems with our demand. A lot of it was because probably unlike what you've heard, we have plenty of oysters. We have so many that, you know, it's one we can sell. The price at the beginning of last year started out at 50 and then by January it had reduced to $45. Also, the gill netters last year, they gill net December, January, February. Their season was a little slow. They do better when the weather is bad. It was kind of a mild spring and winter. They were a little bit under their quota, but they did get $4 a pound for their fish plus, you know, more than that. And the perch, which there's some perch fishing at that time of the year, they got a dollar and over a dollar a pound. So the prices were good. Then we move into, on also, the last two weeks of oyster season was really when COVID started. And it basically closed those last two weeks down. And then we moved into April and with the crabbing season and those first two weeks were kind of slow. Also, the clambers start harvesting clams probably the first week of March. They sell baked clams, razor clams to people in Virginia. The crabbing season starts the second week of March. The harvest was off probably 50% and because of that, the price went up to $50 a bushel. Before that, they were 30 the year before. So it was a little bit harder on the crabbers, the people to buy the bait. The crab harvest started out slow because of COVID. The first two weeks of the season, maybe even three weeks of the season, no one really worked because the price was $80 a bushel. And the bait was $50 a bushel. So it made it not feasible to go, not profitable. But then something amazing happened. We're not sure. We think it actually was due to COVID, if you can believe this. What happened was, of course, if you remember, everybody got stimulus money. And then plus, some people who were unemployed got $1,000 a week to sit home. And what happened was the, instead of buying bushels, people were buying dozens so they could sell them for more money. They made more profit and actually made a big demand for crabs. At that time of the year, it was very few crabs. The crab price actually went from $80 up to 140 and then in one week, it was $220 a bushel off the boat. So it was kind of amazing, but the price held through the summer at 140. And it was a good thing because we actually caught fewer crabs, but the money kind of evened out. So it really was kind of a blessing. The charter boats also start at the time of the year. Their season was definitely off because of COVID, probably 50%. And another thing that came from the COVID was it was an increase in recreational boat traffic. A normal day during the week, it was probably like a weekend, every weekend in the summer, and then the weekends were all like Fourth of July. I'd never seen that many boats out there. So it kind of helped us hindering our harvest a little bit. And then October through December, we started back oystering. The price was 30 bucks. It was a 40% decrease from the year before. That was due to COVID, we're assuming. Restaurants aren't open. The aquaculture suffered through the summer and not being able to sell any oysters. And by December, we were seeing that drop in market. Just this past week, I only worked two days. And so with the price at $30, it's kind of hard to make it on two days a week. Also, another thing that the watermen do, there's hunting parties, there were sea duck parties. That wasn't off as, as bad as the charter fishing business. I think people were finally tired of being inside and they wanted to get out. And so that business is doing fair. But the gill net, which starts in December, the price is down. I've got a dollar 85 here on this screen. It's actually cheaper than that. Last night I talked to somebody, it's a dollar and a quarter. So people aren't fishing. They have a certain amount of quota that they're allowed and they're hoping that the price will go up, but the chances aren't one. So also now we're going to talk about our seed program that we do every year. Those funds come from taxes on bushels of oysters. They also come from surcharges, which I said was 250 surcharges. This year in Talbot County, we get all that money. And then there's this M dot mountain transportation money that we get. It's actually $2 million. 1.2 million of that goes to sanctuaries. This past year, we actually got a little bit more. Instead of 800,000, they gave us 900,000 dollars. And that whacked up to about $78,000 per county. We, we're trying to get that changed a little bit. It goes to every county. Like I said, we have 250 surcharges here. That's probably a quarter of all in the state. Baltimore County has two surcharges. They get $78,000. We have 250. We get $78,000. So it's a little bit inequitable and we're trying to even that out, but that's where we're going to go. This is what we did last year. We spent $309,000. We bought 44,000 bushels, almost 45,000 bushels of shells that we put overboard. We sent actually 9,671 bushels of shells to Somerset County. The reason for that is last year, a lot of Talbot County boats were down there. And we knew that this year we would be down there, which we are right now. We're down there oystering. And so, you know, they also had a very good spat catch last year. So we thought, you know, this is a good place for an investment for our money. The bars that we planted in Broad Creek, we planted 15,000 bushel layer. We also did 20 million spat on shell. We got Whitman Wharf to do that, to try to keep the money in the county, so to say. In the past, we had done it through, if we got any spat on shell, we usually did it out of Horn Point. But this year, we were fortunate enough to do it at Whitman Wharf and we thank them for their help. And we tend to put those spat on shell out to different user groups. There's five user groups actually to spend this money on. There's hand tom, power dredge, sail dredge, divers and patent tongers. And so the spat on shell we planted on Stone Rock, House Point, those are places where divers, patent tongers and sail dredgers were. So we also want to have a special thanks to some restoration partners and that's Blouse and Gay Seafood. They donated 300 bushels of shells to us. And that picture is the watermen who are helping load bags of shells. Then Whitman Wharf offered their set tanks and they helped plant the 3 million spat on shell. And then also, Queen Anne County, I, I talked about how earlier we sent some money to Somerset County. Well, Queen Anne sent us $20,000 to buy spat on shell and we put them in the tread out and on hand tom. So this is kind of a breakdown from the year before. And the reason I wanted to show this is we try to spend about $250,000 a year. Last year, we only spent 160. And the reason is because we were promised that we would be able to buy some wild seed from Virginia in the fall and it didn't turn out. So that money is, we actually spent this year. That's why we spent 300 and almost 10,000 because the 50,000 we didn't spend last year, we spent this year. And then this is 2018 and if you see, we did spend about $250,000. And that's what we do. And if you also look, look down to the bottom, it shows the wild seed. Everybody really liked the Virginia wild seed. One reason is because it seemed to, we figured it to be seven times cheaper than the spat on shell. And the reason for that was the spat on shells are about 3% survival rate. So when you get 20 million, you really don't get 20 million spat on shell. But when you buy the wild seed, about 95% of that survives. It also comes from Virginia. They seem to have an oyster down there that is doing much better than ours up here. And so we thought they're, they're pretty much disease-free and resistant. So we thought if we bring them up here, we could spark some kind of- So we thought if we bring them up here, we could spark some kind of something that, you know, would help this area. So. And but the problem is, we can't get it anymore. We don't know why, but all of a sudden, it's not available to us. So as I said, we spend about $250,000 a year. We'd like to spend $500,000 a year. And so another way that we're trying to get money is through nutrient credits. We talked about that earlier in the year at the council about nutrient credits. If you see the aquaculture, they plant spat on shell and they harvest with either dredge or sometimes in cages. The oysters stay overboard most of the time for 18 months. They use triploid oysters, which cannot reproduce. And they have, they're approved to get nutrient credits. The public fishery, on the other hand, does basically the same stuff. We plant spat on shell, and we catch it either tongs, dog or dredge. We don't harvest this spat on shell for three years. So it's in the water longer, filtering the water and helping the ecologically. And then we also put oyster overboard that can reproduce. So they're also adding to the ability to reproduce while we're there for those three years. So but we have not got nutrient credits. And I know I told you this earlier, we're supposed to get them, but I don't understand why we don't get them. I haven't gotten them all.
All right then, Jim.
Got one more thing. Well, actually, it's two more. I'll be real quick. Even though COVID, and we usually have two fundraisers a year. We were unable to do either one. But we're still able to give, we try to give back to the community. The community, like you said, down here is great people. At one time, we were broke, actually in the hole, and the community stepped together. And now we are sound. I don't know if we can go another year without having a fundraiser. But this year, we were able to give four scholarships out, two in St. Michael's and two in Easton for $1,000 each. We also donate $1,000 to the hospital to get PPE, is it? Yeah. And we also, we donate to other people throughout the community. And we try to do that as much as we can, because we understand that it is a community and we're all here together. So, and I think I have one more, and I'm done. But we want to thank you that are supporting us. We did have a protest this year in March. It went very smoothly. It was kind of, it was very peaceful. I think only one person was arrested at the end for squealing tires. But we want to thank Easton and town, the town police for their help. And if we can help them, there's someone that we definitely want to try to help. And again, we want to thank you. And all that Robert, our Captain Newberry talked about last year's session and how successful we were. And we want to thank Delmore Fisheries, too, for all they do for us, especially in Annapolis. So thank you, guys. Are you ready, Rob?
Oh, yeah. I'm ready. I'm ready. Council, I'd like to thank you very much for taking the time. I'll be real brief. We want, we do want to thank you very much last year for the support you gave us during session. We had 20 bills against us, and we worked diligently and hard and eventually wound up having nothing to affect our industry. A couple of bills were put on hold, but with this COVID-19 and this brief session that's coming up, they're not going to be heard. There was no special session. That was basically thrown out. So move forward. We've done, we've done an excellent job as far as trying to keep the watermen, watermen busy. I mean, you know, we are essential personnel because the more they ramp it up, you know, we're still going to work every day. And you need to be very proud of these guys in Talbot County. They do, they do a fantastic job. I mean, we represent almost every county on the shore here in Talbot, you know, just slams everybody. I mean, they, they help, you know, they help all the other counties as far as their financial going. They, you know, we meet, try to meet consistently on the second Sunday of each month, but had a little problem with some COVID problems last Sunday. So we might do something this Sunday. But I do want to thank you for the time that you took and helping us on some of these bills. This session this year, I just, I don't know if you guys have got any type of briefing on it or not, but it's, it's kind of a, a big head scratcher this year. It's looking like the Senate is going to be hearing, everything is going to be virtual. I mean, there'll be no personal testimony taken whatsoever, written testimony and virtual testimony. The Senate is going to allow seven opponents, seven proponents for bills. That's all they're going to allow. And those people will be selected by that committee. And we have a major problem with that. So if we have a bill that does, we won't know any of the bills until January. Everything had to be prefilled this year, and they're holding it pretty quiet. Something, something's going on. But what concerns me about the Senate side is, is that if the committee is going to select the opponents and proponents, people not only in watermen's issues, but Second Amendment rights or anything, they're not going to hear their voices heard. On the other hand, the House of Delegates is allowing up to 50 people, and they will be first come, first served. So per bill. So I'll be meeting with Senator President, or the President, President of the Senate next week, Mr. Ferguson. And we're going to discuss this a little farther to see if we can get it modified because some of these issues. But, you know, it's hard to say session could be this year. They could be working on just the, the police reform, the budget, and the Kerwin bill. And those are the three things they might go home. Depends on how far this, this COVID carries on. So that, that would be a blessing for us. If we didn't have, have this battle, this will be the first year that, you know, hopefully we won't have to go over there and defend our right to work. But, no, but with Talbot County, I mean, one thing I do want to emphasize, and then I'll be done here, is that in the latest report that we have from the Department of Natural Resources, Talbot County, just to give you an idea, and it's, it's kind of a situation that bothers me, is that you are aware of what they did in Harris Creek with the $30 million that was spent there and the $63 million that was put into the Chop Tank River complex. In the comparison on the fall survey for oysters, Broad Creek, specifically at Deep Point, had a spat count of 1,800, which is like, that's the golden chalice right there. 1,800 spat per bushel, with an average across the entire Broad Creek area of around 500 to 600. We go one mile away where they invested $30 million, they couldn't even get over 210 spat per bushel, where they put $30 million. So the work that your county watermen are doing in Broad Creek, Great Bar, through the Chop Tank, and wherever they work, without all these millions and millions of taxpayers' dollars being spent, their money is coming directly from their surcharges and from the MDOT money. These guys have done a fantastic job. And, and it's, it's just amazing to me to see over the past 10 years or 15 years, how that Chop Tank River complex has increased in the harvest. But you constantly hear the environmental group saying, we're over harvesting, we're over harvesting. Our numbers are going up with less effort. We've got less bushels. We've got less days. We've got fewer watermen actually oystering now, but our numbers are still going up. I mean, these guys are catching their limits now. Hour and a half, two hours, three hours. They're catching anywhere from 20 to 24 bushels. Depends on the gear that they're, that they're using. And this is throughout the entire region. This is from Chop Tank, you know, Chop Tank River South. And it's, it's been a great year. We're turning around. I think you're going to see the oyster population, mother nature, and, and the good Lord has waved his hand on the oysters. The spat count, every place we're seeing, we're getting, seeing loads of baby oysters. So it's good things down the road. But I just want, just want everybody to be aware, the most important thing is there's going to be a lot of information that's coming out. Please put a little salt and pepper on this information when you hear it coming from what we call the other side, which are the environmentalists, because they're very over concerned about our increase in oyster harvest and our increase of oysters. Because what they're doing really is not working with the watermen do, because that's what they do for a living. You know, when you want someone to plant your farm, you call a farmer. You don't call a plumber. And that's the way I look at it. These watermen do a great job. And Talbot County is a fantastic county. We're pleased to represent them. And, and, you know, these guys really need to have, you know, a good thumbs up from you guys because they do a fantastic job, not only economically, but environmentally in your county. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say a little something. So I wanted to thank Jeff and Captain Newberry for that presentation and to see it in pictures of all that the watermen do to replant back in the waters. I remember there were, you know, previous council members who's like, you just take and you don't give back. And that just, you know, they say, a picture's worth a thousand words, or pictures worth a thousand spat. But it has always amazed me, the mortality rate that when the environmentalists put the spat on there, and it's, you know, is it 85, 90, 95% mortality rate? And the, like you said, the millions of dollars spent and just seems such a waste if they would just let you all do your jobs and stop coming up with these bills. Just give you guys, you know, a tenth of money and let you do it, and it would be so much more successful. I thank you, all the watermen, for, for everything that you, that you give back to the, to the waters. It's, it's very much appreciated. And you are correct about kind of how they're going to do things in Annapolis and, and which ones are going to be virtual committees, and how they're going to put them together in packets of for and against and support with amendments. And they are going to cherry pick who they want to, to speak in person. And I think that's going to be a problem for not just your bills, if they do come to fruition. Maybe they won't. But for all the bills this year, that, you know, these committee members are going to select who they want to hear from. And we're not going to all have our voices heard. So to bring it up in relate, in regards to your bills is correct, but people need to take that and understand that's how it's going to go for almost everything that's going through Annapolis this year. But thank you again for all of you that you do. Appreciate it and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Miss Price. Counsel, any other?
Mr. Callahan, I'd like to add my thanks to, for this, for this thorough report. I appreciate the update and for, and for all the work that the watermen are doing and investing back into this resource. It's, it's an important resource for all of us in this county. And knowing that we have, we need to, we need to work a little on the demand side. And I bought my pint of oysters the way home tonight. I hope everybody else does the same and support these guys. The market is important.
Thank you, Mr. Lashar.
Yep, thank you.
I know, I know Cory is going to say something about oysters. Got to.
Well, I consider oyster is one of the four basic food groups.
I'm going to agree with you.
Jeff, Captain Newberry, once again, thank you very much for this fine educational piece. You guys do a wonderful job each and every year that you come and present before us. The Watermen's Association here in Talbot County should be commended for all this work, not just here in the county, but across the eastern shore. And I certainly do agree with you when it comes to getting those credits. You all should be getting those nutrient credits, as well as how the state issue those, those funding back to us. We should not be getting the same amount of funding as Baltimore County. We have certainly more watermen than Baltimore County. We had more restoration as far as oyster repopulation in Baltimore County. And so those dollars should be weighed out according to the number of watermen and restoration being done. But that's an analysis for you, and it seems that we always should stick when it comes to that. But again, thank you very much for all you guys are doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pack. Mr. DiVillo, I mean, you had a short career on the water, didn't you?
Very short, as I am. I have absolutely no proof to base my theory that eating fried oysters, the zinc fights off COVID. But I'm thoroughly going to believe that and continue sucking those things down every weekend that I can. So I, the watermen know they've got my support, and I really support them because I love what they do. I love who they are and how well they take care of each other. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiVillo. So I'm going to add to all that myself. Jeff and Captain, you guys do a phenomenal job. And we couldn't, we couldn't run, run this county without you and with your support. The seafood's unbelievable. We probably got the best seafood in the country right, right, right here in our little, in our little county. And I too mean that. And, and thanks for an update, Jeff. You did a good job. And Captain, we really appreciate you, you fighting for us in Annapolis and anything we can do to help you, you just let us know.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Y'all have a good Christmas now. Thanks a lot.
Okay, you got, you guys have a great Christmas, too.
All right, thank you.
Okay, okay. Now we are counsel. We're going to be moving on to our public hearing. We're a little bit behind, and I appreciate everybody hanging in there. So let's, let's start off with counsel. Now we have two public hearings before us considering community development block grant. And I will hand it over to Mrs. Morris to do the presentation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Tonight, we're here to talk about community development block grant projects in the county. The first project we're going to talk about concerns, a project that we partnered with the Neighborhood Service Center on. And we were the lucky recipient of $414,000 in community development homeless initiative funds. And these funds went to purchase a home located at 6 South Street, that the Neighborhood Service Center will be in charge of owning and administrating. And I'm going to turn it over to Marilyn Neal to give a little presentation. And Marilyn, I'll be showing your PowerPoint as you're talking.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi. How you doing?
I'm doing fine. Thank you for the opportunity to share our progress.
No problem. If you, if you want to, you can turn your camera on if you can.
I, I put it on and it's doing something crazy. So.
Okay, okay. We can, we can, we can hear you. So we're, we're in good shape.
Okay.
Okay.
That's probably you as an Arab, but that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Okay, Marilyn. So before you, before you is the property that we partnered with the county to purchase at 6 South Street. It, it turned out to be a really, really good investment. We did have some bumps in the road, but they're all worth it now. There will be three affordable housing units. And what makes this property so unique is because the Neighborhood Service Center finds out while dealing with our clients that the poverty starts between their gross income and net income. So each one of these three units, we will base the rent on their net income. So I'm very excited about that. We're going to have one apartment that will be a pilot for two gen, where we will take a homeless family and hopefully stop poverty with that generation, that being a parent and child.
That's great. That's great.
So you're looking at the side of the building where we had some basins. And it was removed. We put new installation. So it'll be energy efficient. The porch was in need of upgrades. Some of the floors were bad. The railing was sort of outdated. So the picture with the white handrails is how it did look. And the black ones is how it looks now. So I advise you to take a ride by. It really looks nice.
Right. That's great.
The HVAC system was on the roof, which if you go by and look now, is, the porch is gone. It's set up like patio style. The HVAC system has been placed on the ground and it looks nothing like that. And then when you, this, when you look to the other side, in the kitchen, there was a stairway that was not HDA compliant, ADA compliant. I apologize. So we moved that to the living room where you see the black ride on stairway. And where you see the handrail, the stairs going up, that was just open. There was no banner, no form of protection there. And when you look at it, it looks like it's been there all the time. And it's removable. So if you're taking up furniture, you're able to lift the banisters up and take your furniture to the second floor. And then you will see the picture where the smoke detector is. It was radiators below those windows. So the contractors cased that in to make it safe. So the contractors cased that in to make it safe if there's children living in there. Or seniors, we don't have to worry about them, um, falling, getting burnt. It turned out very well.
Thank you, Marilyn. So this project is coming to a close and, um, we are required by the block grant to hold a public hearing at the beginning of a project and at the end of the project. And the next project that we want to talk about is a project, we're going to get ready to, um, submit a grant application in January of this year. And we are very excited to partner with the Family Support Center to relocate the Family Support Center from the county, um, owned government building at 215 Bay Street. We've loved having you, but we are very excited to have you be moving to the Easton Elementary School Campus where children will be able to matriculate from birth through fifth grade on one campus. So I'd like to invite Wendy Deal, who's the Executive Director of the Family Support Center, to talk a little bit about the project. And I see Dr. Wiley with us as well this evening.
Thanks, Jessica, and thank you all for having us tonight. I'm going to, uh, start by giving you a little history of Head Start. I don't know how much everybody knows about Head Start, but, um, Head Start, uh, came into existence in 1965. It was a federally funded program, uh, designed to be a compensatory program for at-risk children and their families living in poverty, um, to help get them ready for school. Um, there was a major discrepancy between their school readiness and their, uh, that of their, um, moderate income peers. Uh, so Head Start's been around for quite a while. In, uh, 30 years after it started and after much research on what happened to the first really years of life, um, they discovered two very important things. One is that in order to really impact children's success in school, um, and in life, there has to be a, uh, significant amount of parent involvement. And the second thing, and probably the more important thing, is that development doesn't start when children hit preschool. Development starts actually before birth, but that the first three years of life are incredibly important as setting the foundation for what happens with children, um, as they age, as they go through school and as they become adults. So in 1995, they expanded the Head Start Act to include early Head Start. So early Head Start at that time served, excuse me, pregnant women and, uh, children under the age of three and their families, um, providing everything from early education experiences to parenting and all types of family support. In 1996, Talbot County received first state funding for what was the Family Support Center, and that was a state-funded, um, very similar model to early Head Start where you have young children and their families coming to the center. In 1996, Talbot received funding for that. In 2002, with Head Start, federal Head Start expansion funds, um, the Family Support Center, as it was, was converted to an early Head Start program. Now, we've kind of married the two, so we do family support. We use the family support model and still receive some state funding, but the bulk of our base funding is from the federal government through our early Head Start grant. So this year, next year in FY '21, we will be, have been in Talbot County for 25 years. So I'm, I'm looking forward to celebrating that in a new, in a new facility, hopefully. So, uh, today we serve 65 children ages birth to three years. Um, that is our funded enrollment. In 2017, they made some changes to the Head Start Act. It was reauthorized and at that time they, um, they made some changes to increase the impact of early Head Start on children. Um, and they did that by increasing what they refer to as the dosage of, of early Head Start. And, and what that means is the intensity and duration. So previously, early Head Start was a part day, part week program. Children would come about two and a half hours a day, uh, two and a half to three hours a day, two days a week. In 2017, they increased the requirements so that all children can come to the center five days a week, all day long, all year long. And so they have, they have provided the funding and the support necessary to provide full day, full week, full week services to all of the children that are enrolled. I think that's a wonderful thing, but what that did for us was really had an impact on our capacity in the center. At that time, we were serving, you know, we were serving 60 to 70 children in the center during the course of a week. Now we have the capacity to serve 52 children, um, and that's it. And we have, we're funded for 65, so clearly we need more space. We are incredibly grateful, uh, to the county for allowing us to, to be housed in the Bay Street building right now. I know that the county wants their space back, uh, and we would love nothing more than to be able to give it back to them. It's a wonderful space. It is not conducive to working with infants and toddlers in a classroom setting. Um, and the regulations around, uh, childcare are that you have to have 70 sinks and toilets and things like that. And that facility does not have those, um, those amenities to allow us to expand any further than we've already done. And so, uh, so as we're looking forward, we were looking for a space that would allow us to serve all 65 children, all, every week, all week, all year long. And it's so happened to coincide with the construction of the new elementary school and the destruction of the Dobson Building. We had been over, uh, to, to the Head Start end of the building. Um, and when we thought about the demolition, we thought, why don't we see if we can save part of the building? So, um, so that is kind of what we're proposing to do. There are four classrooms that were remaining, um, after the demolition of the building. Um, we are hoping to be able to renovate those, um, and house the early Head Start program in those four classrooms. And that, that's about the history of the project. I want to tell you just a few minutes about why this is so important for Talbot County. The community is, this community is a wonderful community and they embrace many, many initiatives. One of the things that early Head Start, um, really focuses on is the, uh, working with those at-risk children in poverty and their families. There are currently, and for about the last five years or so, about 14% of the children in Talbot County are living at the poverty income guidelines, which for a family of three is only about $21,000. So if you can imagine trying to, trying to survive on that, it's very difficult. We know that poverty, uh, children living in poverty have a higher risk of having other factors that negatively impact their life, whether it's unstable housing, whether it's food insecurity, um, whether it's developmental delays, um, adverse childhood experiences, and that all leads to poor outcomes. We also know that children living in poverty are not as ready for school as their peers. Um, the, the statistics on school readiness in Talbot County, um, again, for about the past five years, um, have about 43% of children at school entry that are actually ready for school. And so our mission is to, to try to begin those services and begin supporting children's development as early as possible so that they can make up that, uh, make up the gap that, and make, that helps them succeed in school. We also have about 100 children between the ages of zero and three who have been diagnosed with a developmental delay or a disability. Early Head Start is mandated to serve at least 10% of its full enrollment, uh, children with disabilities. And so we actively recruit and partner with the early intervention programs to try to bring in as many children that need the additional help as, as possible. We also serve, uh, children with chronic health issues. We also, um, with teen parents and, and fortunately, the number of teen parents in the county has, has gone down over the years. We still have about six or eight each year for whom we provide childcare so they can continue in high school and graduate. And so it is a very comprehensive program. We not only provide, uh, services to the most at-risk families and children, um, we not only provide early care and education, but we also monitor children's health, their nutrition, their, uh, make sure they have a mental health, make sure their children are getting immunized. We focus on dental health. We, uh, also focus on mental health or what we call social, social emotional wellness. Um, because we know that children in poverty are subject to more stressors, um, than, than their peers, um, and that can, that, that can lead to poorer outcomes for those children.
Well, thank, thank you, Wendy. Do you want to, um, comment, um, Dr. Wiley real quick?
Just let me unmute. Now, I've talked a lot about the children's initiative that, uh, with public schools and health and social services. And the whole concept of that is embraced by early Head Start. Starting early, investing early, not just in the children, but the families. And you can see good outcomes, better outcomes, better ready for school. So this is a good program.
Thank you, Dr. Wiley. So, um, so counsel, um, let's go ahead and now we're, um, Jess, uh, we're going to go ahead now and open the public hearing on the community block grant project. If you wish to, uh, comment, please provide your name. You're going to have three minutes to speak if you're, if you're an individual and then five minutes if you're representing an organization. So, Mr. Dorm, do we have any callers online?
Oh, we do have a, a few callers online. Uh, no one has currently indicated they wish to speak. Uh, if you are a caller on the line and you, uh, want to speak, please press star three, asterisk three on your phone, or if you're on the computer, uh, click on the raise hand button.
Hey caller, you're, uh, welcome to speak on, on the, on the grants if you'd like. Anybody willing to speak or have anything to say?
No one is indicating.
Okay, all right. All right, so, um, now we will close the public hearing on the, uh, community development grant. So, um, open, open it up to, 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 to counsel for, for a quick comment.
Well, Ms. Callan, I will be brief. Uh, I certainly support both of these initiatives and, um, I remember being, uh, at the, uh, property with, uh, Trevor Newcomb, their chairperson of, but the Neighborhood Service Center and, and touring that, uh, that location. And I tell you from the photographs that Ms. Neal showed us this evening, it, it looks completely different than when I saw it several months ago. So, um, hats off to her and her board for a marvelous job at getting that property ready, uh, for, uh, citizens to move in, for families to move in. And again, it just underscores the need here in Talbot County once again, uh, to provide housing, uh, to the homeless population here in the county and to not just provide housing, um, but get them prepared for self, self-sufficiency so they can live, uh, on their own, uh, here in the county. Uh, and, and certainly, uh, for all the great work that, um, the staff has done over at the Early Head Start Center. Uh, and look, I remember we had a county manager back in 2008 that came up with an idea to, uh, move the center from Port Street. That center was actually over top of the Neighborhood Service Center for some, for some time, uh, and then our county manager had the idea to move them over to Bay Street and where they've been, I believe, since 2008, 2009. They need their own home. Uh, it, it'd be great to have them right there on the campus of the, uh, the elementary school, uh, where they can, as Ms. Morris put it, matriculate, uh, back and forth across the campus, uh, with their fellow students. So I think it's a great idea to have them on that campus where they can be in an atmosphere of learning and growing.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Anybody else on counsel? Okay, go ahead, Price.
So, um, I, I'm on the Neighborhood Service Center board and Ms. Neal is, is absolutely amazing what she does for the community. Um, I fully support that. You know, it doesn't take much for a family to fall out on hard times, you know, especially when we think about COVID and businesses closing now. Uh, these are the vulnerable pockets of our population that we definitely need to take care of. So I, I'm thankful for that opportunity for 6 South Street and how well it's been redesigned. Uh, and as far as, um, the community grant goes for, uh, Head Start, I mean, these are kids and I, I, I love kids. They are our future, you know? You know, they say it's hard to teach an old dog new tricks. Well, you know, at that point, we don't really have the opportunity to. So I think putting them on the same campus together is, is very wise. It utilizes, um, it makes resources that much more easier to get, um, keeping everything together like that. So I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity and I look forward to, uh, seeing it, it flourish once we get that, that, uh, building done and everything.
Thank you, Mr. DeVilleo. Ms. Price? You good? Okay, Mr. Lusher? Mr. Lusher, my good?
I'm, I'm just, I'm just glad that, uh, that we were alerted that, uh, of the need for these additional classrooms and were able to take advantage of this in time and, and didn't, uh, demolish them. And now here comes this proposal for funding, uh, making good use of that, of that, uh, remaining structure from the elementary school. So, uh, thanks for all who had the foresight to, uh, to make this happen.
I, I would, I would agree. So, um, thanks a lot for, uh, Jess, for, for putting this together and, and, and Marilyn and Dr. Wiley and Wendy. We really appreciate all your efforts and your whole team. And, um, we, uh, going to make this happen for the, for the community, that's for sure. Okay, so let's move on. Um, now what we need to do is introduction of an administrative resolution. Our next item of business is a administrative resolution authorizing a community block grant application for the Family Support Center project. Madam Secretary, could you read, please, the administrative resolution for the record, please?
Administrative resolution, whereas the state of Maryland through the Department of Housing and Community Development has solicited applications from eligible jurisdictions to apply for funding under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program. And whereas Talbot County is eligible to apply for funds from the Maryland CDBG program through the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And whereas the Talbot County Council has held the required public hearing related to the formulation of the SFY 21 grant application on December 15th, 2020. And whereas the Talbot County Council understands and acknowledges that they would be responsible for the completion of grant activities and any corrective actions, including the repayment of funds if necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that the County Council of Talbot County authorizes the submission of an SFY 21 CDBG application for funds in the amount of $800,000 for the relocation of the Family Support Center to the Easton Elementary School Campus and renovation of classroom space with the location being 305 Glenwood Avenue, Easton, Maryland 21601. Be it further resolved that the Talbot County Manager is authorized and empowered to execute any and all documents required for the submission of the grant application, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 15th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2020.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I appreciate it. Is there a motion in a second to approve the administrative resolution as presented?
So moved.
Oh, yeah. Actually introduce it first, ma'am, Mr. President.
Okay, Madam, um, so is there a motion to introduce? Is there a motion in a second to introduce it?
I think you probably just call the roll to see who wants to introduce.
Right. That, that's exactly. Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye. Okay, we've got a, I'm going to do a second to introduce.
Ms. Callahan, I will now offer the motion to go ahead and move this to both this evening. It is an administrative- It is an administrative resolution. This eligible will be voted on upon the night. So we'll make the motion. We go ahead and vote on this, this resolution this evening.
And Mr. President, I would like to second it. And I'd also like to say, this is one of the reasons I hate being virtual. We're not in the same room. We need to give a lot of credit to Mr. Hollis on this. I thought I recalled this was his idea to save those rooms and split the wall up so that we could continue to move for, to move those over there. So he deserves some huge kudos for this coming through, whether it's Hollis Hall or what. We definitely want to make sure that we get him on the record and thank him for that.
I, I would agree with that, Mr. De Villio. That was a big part of that, trying to save those and those classrooms. And we saved a lot of money by keeping that up there. So that was a very, very good move on Mr. Hollis's part. Okay, so we have, okay, so we have a motion and a second it to go ahead to approve this grant. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. De Villio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Okay. Motion passes. Okay. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wiley. Thank, thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it. Okay, so next on the agenda is, is the county manager report. And Mr. Hollis is, I'll give, give that for us.
So thank you, Mr. President. I see Mr. Risher is on. The first item is to request your approval to move forward with professional planning and environmental services associated with runway four dash two-two safety improvement program. Mr. Risher is proposing deductive field survey January of this coming year. Cost is $37,785, fully reimbursable through FAA. Micah, would you like to say anything additional?
No, Andy, that's pretty, you summarized it right there. We're keeping our program moving. Basically, we need to get out there and, and, you know, measure our wetlands, do another, do another forest conservation survey to find out what the impacts will be for, you know, for the upcoming project. And, you know, this is going to be coupled with some other geological survey and, and the geotech work that we plan on doing within the next six months.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Micah. So, okay, so we have a motion. Is there a motion in a second to help out on the runway four twenty-two safety improvement prize, program?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, second Mr. Price's motion, Ms. Callahan.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. De Villio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
So the second item, counsel, is to request your approval to award bid twenty dash fourteen, which is furnishing and delivery of Ashto M43 size number eight triple washed aggregate for roads to the low bidder Vulcan Construction Materials, unit price of $27.60 per ton, total bid amount of $110,400. All stone will be received by May 21st and there is, I'm sorry, May 1st, and there's sufficient funding in the roads budget.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. Okay, there's a, a motion in a second, or excuse me, I need, I need, there's a motion on the floor to buy some stone and aggregate. Is there a motion in a second?
Mr. Callahan, I will make the motion that we accept bid twenty dash fourteen.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Thank you, Mrs. Price. Madam Secretary, could you please call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. De Villio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
So counsel, I see Mr. Clark is on the phone requesting your approval to award amendment number fourteen for bid fifteen dash two-three, Rowan, Two Row Incorporated in the amount of $30,750. That bid is for Talbot County St. Michael's Phase Five Engineering Services. Terminates for additional inspection and engineering services required due to the extension of the construction work in St. Michael's. Funding is available through the USDA loan grant package that Mr. Clark has available. And Ray, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, not this time. I think we're good.
Mr. Counsel, there's a motion in the second it to approve some engineering and work in St. Michael's.
I'll make a motion.
I can, I can.
Okay, uh, there's Mrs. Price, there's a motion and there's a second for Mr. De Villio. Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. De Villio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
Motion passed.
And counsel, next is request a letter of support for the Sheriff's Office for a grant application for an adolescent clubhouse for adolescent youth ages 12 to 17 who are at risk for substance abuse disorder and no county funds are required.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. Is there a motion in a second?
Second.
Was that you, Corey, at motion? Yep. And, and, yep, it was Corey. And Mrs. Price, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. De Villio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
All right.
So counsel, next is the request for approval for an update to the procurement policy. It was last updated in 2004, so that's almost 17 years ago. The majority of the changes are simply dollar threshold amounts, whereas you can competitively bid versus getting to shop for three prices versus simply doing a purchase order. The major part of the change is something the council or maybe past councils have discussed before, which is the ability of the council to give extra weight to those businesses bidding that are located in Talbot County. The experience that you gain as you work up through the ranks is something that, um,
a book can't, a book can't teach you. Um, and you have done that in everything, um, throughout your career, and, you know, you know this county, um, like almost nobody else. And so I've really, really enjoyed working with you. Um, so thank you, uh, so, so much. And, and this one, this next one, I mean, Andy, ten years ago, the two of us, um, went in for office. We were the two newbies. You had obviously been at St. Michael's, you'd been county manager here, and, um, I know you probably looked at me and said, you know, who, who is this little, little woman running for council? And, um, you know, I think we, we taught each other a lot, um, mostly, uh, how to keep your chin down. Um, but at this point, right now, we all have to, and that's an inside joke with Mr. Hollis, um, but right now we have to keep our, our chins up to get through everything that everybody's, um, going through. And one of the most touching moments, um, was, you know, after we served the four years together, and it was reelection time, and I was so, so honored that you agreed to, to speak at one of my events. Um, and the, the respect that you, um, have taught me, um, you've taught me more than anybody else, um, in my ten years on the council, and, um, a true, true friendship that, um, you know, Mr. Pack said he's gonna be looking in the windows and doors and broom closets and all that for you, but we all know where you live, and you better not go very far because I think we're all still gonna need you, and I know for one that, um, I'm still gonna need your support and your friendship. So don't go too far. Um, thank you to everybody so much, and, um, move on to the next. Thanks.
Thanks, Mrs. Price. Well, well said, Ms. Price. Mr. DeVio?
Well, gosh, Pete, you did such a wonderful job. It's incredibly hard to follow, but with, um, thinking to, to the, the big three here, you know, with, with Dr. Wadley, to have a, a commissioner of the state of Tennessee coming here, w- we were very fortunate to have somebody with such incredible knowledge that she had, um, and her dedication to work with the superintendent, to keep, with, working with the schools, to keep the kids safe, all of the county. Um, I, I hated seeing counties around us publishing these lists of businesses that are breaking the rules and shutting things down, and, and she did not go that direction. She's been educationally driving the message forward, uh, keeping us safe. I, I can't imagine her, uh, uh, a more difficult career with, with all of the pandemics that she's been through. Um, and to end on this one, I, I think she should see this as a win, as well as the numbers have been in Talbot County. She has absolutely led us to, to safety and, uh, helped us make some good decisions. I really will be missing her, and, and, uh, I'm glad that we'll be working with a deputy that she has been working with so closely. Uh, Mary Kay, uh, I'll say, you know, Tom Hughes, a good friend of mine, I'll paraphrase him, he said, uh, we're between a rock and a hard place losing you. Uh, you, you are a institutional wealth of knowledge that, um, just walking around because of the comp plans and what you've been through with the county, um, it, you are leading some very big shoes to fill, and I appreciate all the times that I've called you with somebody who has been angry, uh, you know, wanting to rush something through, who doesn't understand the processes or what have you. You, you've always been excellent to work with, with me. Um, you have said family is incredibly important to you, and I, I see that how, I see us as a family. I think that we can all learn from one another. I think we do all learn from one another, and we all have each other's backs. And in, in a small rural county, in, you know, Talbot County, you can't go to the grocery store without somebody knowing who you are and yelling at you about something, uh, and you've always been just a quick phone call away to help with that. Um, Mr. Hollis, I, I am greatly gonna miss the, the friendship that I've built with you. Um, I, I don't know how much working relationship we've got, and it seems to be all more friendship-driven. You've been fantastic, somebody that I can always rely on to make sure that you've made, you've given us all the information to make the decisions. You've always gone above and beyond to help us under, help me understand, um, how we got here, just as I, we were talking earlier with Head Start, um, you know, putting up a wall, and it was as simple as a wall to save some rooms, and, uh, quick little decisions like that can save millions upon having, instead of having to build those rooms, and you have that foresight because you care about this community and all aspects of it, and all individuals, businesses, uh, the nonprofits, all of the different groups. You, you know them all, you're well-respected in all of them because you care, and, and nobody in this county knows or cares how much you know until they know how much you care, and you, you show it because the, the decisions you make, the discussions you have, uh, the, the way that you carry yourself, I, I hope to emulate it, but I, I know I can't replicate it. You, you are, uh, just an incredible individual that I greatly appreciate, uh, and I will absolutely miss you, um, as you, you step down from this.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Um, so this, all, all four of you, all four of you, I'm, I'm so proud of, um, everything that you said, and it's really hard for me to follow some of this. Um, and it's, it's actually, like, like I said at the very beginning, um, we've got, we've got three people here that are priceless, okay? Um, Dr. Wadley, um, I, I was around when we hired you, and we hired the best, we bested the best. So, um, I commend you for staying here in Talbot County and really fighting with us on some of all the hurdles that you have to jump through and go through, and you're in charge of, you know, um, even people, thousands of people. Um, I want to commend you, buddy, whatever happened, this year, it's gonna be a year that you're in the spotlight, and I can tell you, um, you being in the spotlight, you did an absolutely awesome job, um, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank, and I'm sure the citizens would love to thank you too, because you probably saved a bunch of lives, and you probably helped a lot of people get through a lot of tough times. So I really want to personally thank you for all you're doing, and all you've done for Talbot County and all the citizens, because, um, you're gonna be very, very hard to find and match, that's for sure. Um, Mary Kay, uh, you know, I got to know Mary Kay for the last six years and so, and she's been so incredibly, um, nice to me. Um, once again, Talbot County is, is losing a person that is so knowledgeable on land transactions, land zoning, um, you know, coming up from the ranks, and Mary Kay, I really appreciate, um, your service, um, not, not only service to, um, years ago, uh, being in service, but service to your community too. So all around, you're such a great person, you're inspiration to a lot of people, um, and I know you're gonna miss all the phone calls that I give you all the time saying, Mary Kay, I need you again, can you decipher this? What does this mean? So, um, you know, I'm, I'm probably gonna still call on you too. But, uh, but anyway, um, you're gonna be a hard act to follow too. Um, so really appreciate your dedication to Talbot County and, and all the friendships that you developed and, um, moving on to your endeavors. So we really, uh, support everything that you've done. Okay, last but least, old Andy Hollis, okay? Um, I mean, the man, the man's got a sign named after a whole town, you know what I mean, after him, I mean, and they, we've gotta name something after him here, you know? Um, counsel's probably gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do to name something around here, the Andy Hollis Memorial or something, who knows? But, um, I know Andy has been a special friend to each one of us. Um, he's such a kind person, um, he's considerate, um, there's just so many, all the time, phenomenal qualities about Andy that we're gonna miss. Um, I, I can say, um, when I was, when we were doing the film about Andy, um, I, I could not think of anything that was funny, okay? But it took me a while to figure out something here, and you're gonna love this. So, so Andy, the very first time that I seen Andy in jeans, okay? Couple months, maybe a year ago, it reminded me, and everybody's seen it, of the Seinfeld show when Kramer was in jeans and he was walking around. It was hilarious. So Andy, um, man, I'm telling you, you're a special friend to all of us, and I really thank your dedication for the county, um, and, and it almost, it almost brings a ti- a tear to everybody's eye, I always kid you about, um, not letting you to go, and you know, and I, and I've told you, I don't want you to go, I've told you that. So, um, but anyway, um, we're gonna support you, buddy, and, um, I'm still gonna call you probably early in the morning, get you up. Um, I'm probably gonna do that, um, but you're really, really gonna be missed around here, um, because you drove a team, you drove a team, and your leadership was, was off the charts. And, and ended by, you taught me a lot, and, um, like I've said before, you know, one of the reasons I'm in this spot right now is because of you, because, uh, you taught me how to be, um, a leader, and you gave me advice, and I stuck with it, and it was a hundred percent right on everything. So I, I really appreciated everything you've done for me and, and, and counsel, because counsel, um, loves you and, and, and feels like, you know, yes, we've, we've, we've lost somebody, but yet you're always gonna be around, and like Ms. Price said, um, we're always gonna be reaching out to you and, and asking for your, uh, if, uh, your, um, advice on things, so. Other than that, counsel, does anybody have any final thoughts on, on the three? Uh, we've done a great job, um, and I appreciate it, and that we've kind of extended a little bit. So I'm, I'm going to, um, get the Vice President, Mr. Lesher, to go ahead and wrap things up for us, if you would, Mr. Lesher.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-one, beginning at six o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at four thirty PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Uh, therefore, uh, it's an order, uh, for motion to adjourn, and I'll pass it back to you, Mr. President, for that.
Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Pack?
And, and counsel, one, one, one last thing, counsel, I want everybody to have a, a safe holiday, a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and if anybody needs anything, just let us know, okay? Say yeah, everybody.
I would also join you and, and say, and wishing a happy Hanukkah as well.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.